We'll go ahead and get started. First of all, I appreciate y'all coming out. It was humid, I guess the rain, and understanding that there's a couple of these tonight to repeat with a couple of things. Wanted to just do, we've obviously been in business about a month now. Tomorrow will be 30 days since it's been up and running. I just wanted to have a time helping, so to give you a quick rundown of where we've been. Let me know if there's anything that we need to think about going forward. As I was telling somebody earlier, we're sort of beyond the point now where we've got all the official business out of the way. We've passed codes, we've passed ordinances, we've passed resolutions. It's set us up as a city. That's all, can all run through that here a little bit, but that's all sort of behind us. Now we get to start working on more, some more of the fun stuff. What do we want to be when we grow up? We can start thinking about that. We've got the sort of building blocks set. And now we can start going forward, thinking about comprehensive plans for land use. We can start thinking about park master plans and those types of things. They're a little bit more fun and aren't quite so detailed legally. I mean, we, I think approved a stack of ordinances, you know, a thousand plus pages. All of which came over from the Cat County. But let me go through, I've got a very quick presentation, just really more talking points, but I just wanted to put some stuff down so that we can get, December 10th. We had our first meeting on December 10th. We were sworn in. Mayor Council was sworn in on that night, and then we immediately got to work. So we've been officially operating since December 10th, although we've only been in the city since the 17th. We started a week, actually started a few meetings before this, just trying to get our act together, figure out what we can do. The first official meeting in the city. We turned it into a little bit of a party. Joe Giffen, who's our District 4 Commissioner, lined up some folks, we had some food, we had the color card coming in from our prosecutors. And this was the meeting at 12:01 on December 17th. Basically, 30 days ago, which the city was official and up and running. One of our vendors provided a birthday cake, which we then took out to the City Hall and had it on Monday, but it was a, actually later than that. But anyway, so a little bit of festivities going on for the first meeting. Still work, still got a bunch of ordinances, still got some things added into the record, but also had a little bit of fun on that one. Just a quick summary. In December, we met 10 times. We met almost every day the week before Christmas and Saturday also. So we got in, we got in 10 meetings. We approved the lease for City Hall and Municipal Court, which I'll touch on here in a minute. We appointed some key city staff. We adopted the stack of rules and ordinances that the government city going forward. And also, we've hired the vendors for all of our city services, with the exception of parks. And the reason we haven't hired anybody for parks is because we probably won't be buying the parks. So we've got an intergovernmental agreement with the Cat County. They will maintain the parks through this season. Thought is, and it's nothing formal, but the thought is, we'll probably acquire the parks sometime late summer or early fall, so that we can get our act together during the off-season and be up and running next year with the parks. So, city facilities. Right now, we have two city facilities. We have a lease on. We have City Hall, which is the 200 after Beverly North, or excuse me, Ashford Center North out in Dudley. Have been asked about a lot of people, why outside of the city? The only reason is, we're here, we had a 12-month lease on 12,000 square feet of space that was absolutely move-in ready, with furniture in place. We signed the lease on Friday, and we were fully operational by noon on Monday. So in the world of commerce and real estate, that's beyond warp speed. So we looked at a bunch of space inside the city. There was nothing available that was move-in ready that the landlord, we had workspace, cops making some space out of our playground. It was great space. Landlords said thanks for that. They didn't consider the city located more important as a government entity to be a desirable tenant for a class A office building. That's fairly standard. Everything else in the city, there is space available in the city. However, it needed work. We needed to move things around, we needed to push, put up walls, take down walls, park and all that kind of stuff. We did not have the time or luxury of time to move in there. So we've got a 12-month lease through December of 2013 for Ashford Center North. If any of y'all have been out there, I think you'll understand, it's pretty basic space. The walls and finishes look very much like this building, but it's also very extremely functional space. So we were, our IT guy reported back to us when I looked at it before, back with big eyes saying, the cables were all there, and they didn't cut the ends. You know, it saves us on the $20,000, the fact that when the previous tenant did that, they left all the cables in place. So over the weekend, he was able to go in, plug in all the servers, all the phones, everything and have it all up and running. Anyway, that's where we're at. Only space in the area that was immediately available. We looked at stuff down the Atlantic Law, we looked at stuff further out in Sandy Springs, but this was the space we thought worked best. Municipal Court, we also have a, that's signed a lease on this on the court, about 3,700 square feet. And Building 2 at Corbin Square. Corbin Square is down 85, Norwood Hills. And the space is being built out at this time. We have to make some line modifications. We hope to have the court operations up and running by early to mid-February. So the Cat County Police have something with the right tickets with Brookhaven on, but unfortunately, until we get the court up and running, we're not really in a position to do that. Again, this is temporary space. We hope to sometime in the next 12 months, find space within the city, sign the lease, build it out, to be ready to move in and combine at least City Hall, courts, and hopefully police all under one group. So that's the next search, but this goes up and running and got us in space. We've hired two city staff. Upper Right, our interim city manager, Marie Garrett, wonderful mind. She came, was highly recommended from City John's Creek. She's got 25, I heard today, almost 30 years of experience in city operations, starting as a planning director and has been a city manager in a couple of areas. She was the interim city manager for John's Creek during their startup. So she's working for us on a part-time basis. She has no desire to be the full-time city manager, although we're trying to talk her into doing that. But so far, she has said that she likes, she's a consultant, she likes her consulting gig. So she's here and really has done, I think, a phenomenal job with big picture stuff. We needed somebody, she's been negotiating, we have everyone agreements with the Cat County. She's been working on planning issues, she's been looking at how to get things together with A R C and some of the sort of regional things. So she's brought sort of a big perspective, big picture perspective to us, and at the same time, I think has helped us through some issues. Basically, I'm wrestling with some of the vendors and has gotten us where we need to be. J D Pockendale, interim city manager, excuse me, deputy city manager. J D was on the Governor's Commission. He was the person that put together all the RFPs, coordinated that process. And at the end of the day, I heard from each of the folks on the Governor's Commission, really was the person that ran that operation and knew it best. So we've hired J D on an interim basis. He's on a consulting contract, month-to-month consulting contract, to basically manage the vendors until we get a city manager in, who will then hire his own deputy manager. But J D's job is really sort of the day-to-day operations. He's the one that, that he's in the City Hall 24, sometimes 24/7, and just is handling all the nuts and bolts while Marie is off doing over the sort of big stuff. So they work well together. And then we also, just recently, just this week, have hired our, what is our first official city employee. J D and Marie are interim acting, wherever they're, both on a contractual basis. Susan Boyd, our city clerk. We learned very quickly how important the job of the city clerk is for the city. She's the one that basically keeps us on the straight and narrow, manages all the records, takes, obviously takes notes. The council being, but more importantly, as I've gotten into this, I found out that there's a huge volume of open records and procedural things that we need to do. We have no idea what we're doing. Susan has 25 years of experience as clerk. She holds the highest certifications and was the first person to achieve that highest certification in the state of Georgia. So she comes highly recommended from the city of Smyrna, and she will be in charge with getting the ordinances online, getting the ordinances together, making sure that they all read properly. So her job is to keep all the documents straight. Like I said, she's also officially the first employee of the city of Brookhaven. So we brought her on and the key staff, where we are with some of those, we've hired a couple of Slavon and associates, who right now is doing a search for city manager. That's going to be our first official, well, after Susan, of course, but that's going to be our next hire is, we're looking for, interviewing resumes for the city manager. We want to get the city manager in place, who then will hire the rest of the team. But we have, you know, we've been wrestling with how do we do all this. And I think at the end of the day, firstly, we want to get, we decided we want to get city manager in so that he can then hire his team. We're trying to build this from the top down, but we also want to make sure that we have people in there that they can work with each other. So Susan was somebody that we knew we needed early on. In those 10 now, 15 meetings or so that we've held in the last 30 days, we've adopted code ordinances. Basically, have picked up all the various chapters from the Cat County, with the exception of changing some of the names and changing a few of the processes. We have carried over the entire Decap County Code. So if you have any interest in looking at any of these, go on Mutico, Mutico, or on the Decap County website and look at their code, with the exception of where it says Decap, or it say Brookhaven, with the exception it says Commissioner, or it says Council, you know, we've made those changes. Building regulations, we initially looked at John's Creek, then we're back to the Decap County ordinance. We just, last night, passed Chapter 15, which is one that was a little bit contentious. The license permits to business businesses, that also included the sexually oriented business portion, which we've decided that while there'd been a lot of talk about us signaling that we're different business in the area, simply because they're here, we felt like we needed to have, this ordinance covers more than just adult entertainment, more than the pink tony. It covers adult bookstores, it covers media stores, it covers, of course, the cabaret and all those types of things. There have been several incidents in the area where, for instance, John's Creek spent three years fighting an adult bookstore, but moved in two days before they were up and running. And ultimately, they were successful. But the other thread that we're seeing, this is really what made us adopt a new ordinance. We adopted the Cat County starting with, we were told that the Cat County ordinance is unconstitutional, unenforceable. There are certain things in there that the courts have struck down in other areas, so we, we were told that we needed to clean up our ordinance. And in the process of doing that, rather than just trying to clean up a few other things, we threw out the ordinance and brought in one that's consistent with the ordinance that's been passed in Sandy Street, Sandy Springs, John's Creek, Doraville, and a number of the other municipalities. And what's happening is, people in adjacent, municipalities adjacent to us are beginning to tighten up their regulations. So we felt like it was necessary to be consistent, but also to provide that same sort of protection because some of these municipalities are beginning to, some of the ordinances are taking place, some of those businesses are looking for someplace to go. Brookhaven is a very convenient someplace to go, so we've decided it's necessary to be proactive rather than reactive. So we passed a better ordinance. Going up and down, solid ways, streets and sidewalks, water, city rezoning. Zoning is the same. So if you're looking for, if you have anything to do with putting an additional in your house, building a new house or something like that, everything right now is the same as it was in the Cat County. So we will change it eventually, but for the time being, for expediency, we have simply adopted. One thing I wanted to mention, Chapter 22, solid ways, that is, that's trash. I've heard from Marie Garrett that the Cat County is going to go up on their sewer, excuse me, on their trash pickup. Right now, you pay trash, what is it, roughly 240, 250 a year, and it's a line up of 100 tax bill. And that's going to drop by as much as 40 to 50% to maintain the current, and don't quote me on that, but I think it's a substantial issue. What I've heard from Marie is, we as a city have the opportunity to keep the rates the same or go to the higher rate. If we keep the rates the same, we lose one trash pickup a week. We have, if we keep the rates the same, we have one trash pick, one garbage pickup, we have recycling and yard waste. So three times a week, if we go to the increased fee, we get four times a week. We have two trash pickups, recycling, and yard waste. You probably will see something like this as not something that we have to do right away, but next time you're rolling your trash can down, just think about, you know, do you want to pay that higher fee or can you get mine once a week because you're recycling a little bit more and able to get rid of some of the stuff or get your volume of trash down? So you'll see stuff like that in the next month or two. I'm not sure when exactly we need to make that decision, but it is something that we have the option one way or the other. Again, you know, it may go from 250 to 300, 3 and 1/4. I'll give the exact numbers and let y'all know, but I do know it's going up. I do know we have the option to keep it the same if we elect to go to just one pickup amount.
Jim, you know, if we choose the higher, if we're consistently choosing the higher rate, we're going to get two days pickup. If you can't ever pierce this waste again, we've got a chance to opt out again. I wonder if that's something we would be able to do?
You know, I'll think that we could. Yeah, yeah. I'm sure each time it goes up.
We have a choice.
Yeah, we have the choice. I mean, I'm surprised if we're given this choice now, but you know, I think it's a great thing. Resolutions, ordinances or codes, resolutions are things that we're going to do. We have formally adopted the City Brookhaven Charter. So the charter that you all voted on in March and July is now the official charter of the City of Brookhaven. I didn't know that we had to have a legal order. Legal order is the newspaper that you provide formal notice in. We have to provide formal notice for zonings and for all sorts of other city businesses. So the Champion Newspaper, which is a weekly newspaper that the Cat County is using, is our official legal order. So if you want to see a legal notice from the City of Brookhaven, go to the Champion. I believe it's available online. We've also just recently designated that the American Constitution is a backup because we have very specific requirements for providing notice next number of days prior to certain things happening. And the Champion wasn't giving us the flexibility of the dates that we needed, so we have designated both the A J C and the. Anyway, that's something that, you know, and I'll diverge, but attorneys often, that's one of the first things they challenge is, was the ordinance adopted properly? And part of that is, was notice given and all of the things followed? But we had, we've got to share a topic. We have a new order of license and permits through January 17. We, December 17, Decap County and the city of Brookhaven jointly passed an order of touring, business license, new business license and building permits allows us to get a chance to get everything in place. We have everything in place. We've got a meeting tonight, opening house at City Hall in heaven before. We have 120 people there, all asking questions on billing issues. And I think we asked, answered their questions, I think we satisfied them. But we are up and running, hoping for business for permitting on Friday morning, 8:30. I would suggest if you want to permit, you wait till Monday or Tuesday, next week, because it's going to be standing room only. We're trying to, we're trying to pull all these people. I've got a few, I've got some pamphlets up here that were handed out after your interest in, this sort of talks a little bit about the community development process. But we are up and running now for permits, for resubventions, reparations, and those types of things. And along those lines, we need to establish a pension mission for the city of Brookhaven. We need to establish a border zone appeal for the city of Brookhaven. If any of you have any interest in, I don't want to use the word applying for, put your name in for those positions, then shoot me an email just expressing your desire and a brief bio for that on Marie. We're going to have, I believe, five members for each of those committees. You know, there's also things like licensing and, oh, shoot, we've got a whole list, and I forgot to.
Can you just send an email out and let folks know what the different boards are?
I'll do that. These are my, these are my notes. We've established a budget through January 1 and December 31. Along those lines, we are, our finance department has begun preliminary budget numbers. I've been told that in the next week or two, we, the mayor and council, we're going to sit down and talk about those numbers. In February, you'll see some announcements for public hearings for the budget process. We probably will be past our budget on our second meeting, which is the fourth Tuesday of February. So during that, we'll have at least one, probably two public hearings of the budget, with the process of working through that, we're waiting on. And I think I understand that the governor provides his budget to the state on, I believe, the 17th tomorrow. So once those numbers come out, a lot of our pricing flows from that, so we need to work on those. We're also in the process of negotiating the final, I think just recently, the final agreement with the vendors. So we're collecting numbers. And I think our finance department wants to make sure that they have as much good information together before they publish something, so that we don't get caught in the, well, you said it was this, well, no, that was the old number, here's the new number, and stuff. So they're taking the caution for, February will be budget month. And it will be budget month for the next foreseeable future with our current, you know, because we'll pass the budget early in the year, in the calendar year, which is also a finance year. Brookhaven has a purchasing policy. If any of your businessmen want to sell, or, you know, we have a purchasing manager, I would encourage you to talk to Marie, talk to the finance department, and put your name in there, find out what they're looking for. We have, you know, purchasing policy, we have provided a 5% benefit for local business, you know, as it's described specifically in the purchasing policy. If a local business submits a bid for something for $100, their bid will be credited as, will be entered as $95. So they get a 5% credit for any work or in the, but anyway, it also talks about approvals and those types of things. So this is some of the fun stuff we've done this month. This is what, these are things we had to do and as we move forward. We set the cable franchise, we're beginning to approve, we approved a million-dollar cap release that G M X, the Georgia Municipal Subdivision, provides a leasing facility that we can, particularly one releasing a lot of computer equipment, and we will eventually lease police cars and those types of things. So they can provide us with some very reasonable financing, where they actually purchase the equipment, lease it to us for three to five years, and then at the end of that period, we buy from you for a dollar. So it's a great. And then also, we've approved the $500,000 tax allocation, which is a TAN, which is due at the end of the year. Cities and county governments, a lot of the revenue comes in with property taxes in October, November, but we need cash flow for the entire give. So the TAN allows us to take those, that revenue and spread it out over the years. So we've got, you know, at this point, six and a half million dollars in leases and loans committed toward future tax revenue. We've approved aerial G I S. One thing that I'm going to be able to pump it up, and I think, and hopefully we're going to work this out, is a geographic information system. Aerial photography, where they go in and they will actually fly the property, they'll set up an aerial survey, and we will use that as the basis for a lot of our planning, a lot of our permitting. It will be used by police when they're, you know, it gets built into basically a database of information on what is Brookhaven. And with that information, I think, and this is, we've actually partnered with six other cities, Brookhaven, Dudley, Sandy Springs, Roswell, and John's Creek. And so they're flying sometime in February, when the lights and boughs and trees are released, they'll fly the whole area, and then we will have very detailed aerial maps of the area that we can use for a number of things. We've also approved an agreement with a company called Roadworks to provide, starting January 18th. Decap County through the 17th is providing road services for us, starting the 18th, starting Friday. Roadworks, which is a private company, has a short-term contract to provide tunnel repairs. We have a snowstorm on Saturday morning, there you are supposed to be rolling trucks and getting all that stuff cleaned up. So as of Friday, we're on our own with regard to road maintenance. Roadworks is a, we have, we have a vendor, Low Engineering, the ten of the public works. Roadworks will work for them. They were simply on a contractual basis. They provide labor material for the equipment that will be rolled. When this works came up, we answered questions about why one company? And because the whole concept is that we're going to bid this out to two, three companies and we could low bid, and whoever, you know, is available to do more getting at it. But the contract with Roadworks is for probably a two or three month period. Low Engineering, who is our public works vendor, will now bid these services to half dozen vendors, pick two or three. That process will take a couple of months to work itself through, but in the meantime, we gave it to somebody immediately that was going to provide the services.
Jim, by the way, Roadworks, when they bid for services in Dudley, Sandy Springs, and most cities, they were consistently below the high service. So anybody else who had bid on that was always high in the road. So that was a compliment for us.
We've also just recently approved a $100,000 for IT, hardware and software. I mean, it's, I look at these numbers and I say, what's going on? And, you know, when I talk to the people, and we have realized that we're building a city here. I think at the end of the day, we also swallowed and said, we're going to live and die behind IT. And if we don't have good web presence, if we don't have a good information technology in place, we're going to be hurt. And the biggest fear that I have is that we try to bootstrap something for the sake of saving a few dollars, and I know that doesn't sound, but, and then six months from now, we have to hit the reset button and start over. We've been told that with this, this will take us through the lifespan of the equipment. So we're trying to make decisions where we're not petty-wise and pound and pullers. We're trying to make sure that at the end of the day, if we are spending money, it is legitimate and provide something that takes us into the next generation. We've hired city services vendors. We have for financial administrative services, we have U H Y advisors, who's a tax business consultant. They're providing all of our financial services, they're providing the administrative, people at the front desk and those types. U H Y, one of the big draws for us is that they have, they've put Vegas in, what's Vegas' last name? Jones. Vegas Jones is our finance director. She was the finance director that Lynn Hart's been with for a bunch of years. So she's got, you know, project big, big government accounting, but also as her backup, Chris Pike, who's the finance director at the city of Dudley, is acting as a, as an advisor. So he has provided services to the city of Dudley, and that allowed us to get up and running in another different ways. He brought his experience from Dudley, started in the Cat County, and helped us, I believe, get up and running a lot quicker than we were able to enter that. They've been our life support. They're the ones that, for the first, almost 30 days, they love this, for instance, the projector is integrated, and they love this, and that's part of the hecking of IT is us buying equipment. part of the happening of our I Ts, is us buying equipment that's going to be placed, but they love this for the last fifteen to thirty days. So they have been a great, a great asset to, again, get us up and running and moving forward in the right direction. Municipal Court, Jacob Engineering, they are providing Sandy Springs, they're providing us. They'll be in charge of hiring Judge, they'll be in charge of hiring the clerk of courts and all those people managing that whole process, and basically will be running the operations down at Corporate Square. Communications and community engagement, Jacob Engineering, again, that's website, that is the P R, other things that we're going to be needing to do. We have a basic website up, and I've got it in the last slide, but we have a basic website up, Brookhaven G A dot gov. That was a happy day, we went from dot U S to dot gov. I took this, believe it or not, about three weeks ago, approved as dot gov, you have to go through a whole series of steps, so now we have Brookhaven G A dot gov. We have a very basic website that they're adding to a little bit of the time. We hope to, one day in the next, in the near future, have something that's comparable to some of the other cities, Dudley, Sandy Springs, but right now, we've got, they're trying to just sort of bootstrap. Community Development, Clark Pass, they're a group that, and an engineering group that has strong ties with DeKalb County and was part of the startup and a couple of the other municipalities. They will provide, they will be providing permitting, planning, zoning, and those other items that are involved in the community development aspect. Code enforcement, yes, or code enforcement. And Public Works, Low Engineering, Low Level Engineering Group, again, somebody that's doing work in other areas, their public works director, I think, came from Johns Creek, maybe, but anyway, so they're the ones that are handling road repairs, any engineering work, they're coordinating this G I S stuff, and trying to get that time to the table. So we have all of our primary vendors in place with the exception of parks. Parks will come later in the summer once we, once we bought the park. Something that we are going to roll out soon, we have bought, we've, a group out there, a software application out there called C Take Fix. It's mobile app, you download it to your phone, if you take a picture of a pothole, if you take a picture of a code violation, and it will register the location of their phone, then email that to the city, it lands in an inbox and is checked daily, and it is registered and logged in as a, as a complaint or as a, something that needs addressed. So this is something that hopefully in the next fifteen to thirty days, we're going to have, we have sort of a test site running now, where a couple of people are running around, but for the next thirty days, you'll be able to, for code enforcement or signage issues, if a sign's been knocked down, take a picture of it, send it in, you have to have your, some of us have our location turned off on our phone, you have to have your location turned on so that you can register it, and it'll automatically put it into the database at City Hall. So this is something that I've talked to some people, some other folks have used it, and it's a great app because you can just pull it up and not have to worry about, you know, before with DeKalb County, you either call in or you go online, this way it does it automatically for you. So you'll see something in the next few weeks announcing what we're live with this.
Then you also have it online.
Yes, yeah, they'll be online and, you know, you can always call, I mean, you know, so anyway, in my presentation, the, we have established regular meetings, seven o'clock the second and fourth Tuesday each month. So we're still trying to find, we think that our first two meetings could maybe over.
You got one coming up the city on.
Yeah.
That's believable.
Yeah, that's right, the next meeting, which is the fourth Tuesday of January, twenty-second. Twenty-second, thank you, is in District Four, the synagogue on North Village Hills, and I'll send out an announcement with that address. But if you're, if you're interested in meetings, we're now, we've gotten out of the meet here, meet there kind of thing, and we also hope to, once we get, Prince Dogworth has offered us some space for, you know, a half dozen more meetings. So we've been sort of wandering band of tips here, we hope to end up having our meeting place here soon. As I mentioned, Brookhaven G A dot gov, that's our website, if you want to talk to anybody and Brookhaven, very simple, my email is jim@, if you see any city employee that you want in contact, it's first name, dot last name, Brookhaven G A, and it will get there. Also, allow you to know my Gmail account, more than nothing to have your email there, and also, of course, my cell phone's at the bottom, so please feel free to write any of, all of those down and use them as you see necessary.